I'd like to call this regular school board meeting to order. Roll call.
Mr. Ballard?
Here.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Sturgill?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First hearing of the public.
Hello everyone, my name is Janine Donaldson. I live at 1515 South Lakeview Boulevard, Lorraine, Ohio. And you're probably wondering, how did I know to give my address just by standing at the microphone? Well, many of you know that I did serve on the Board of Education here in Lorraine for many years. And it's been awhile since I've been back to a school board meeting. And I'm here because on the November ballot, you will have the opportunity to vote for me. I'm running for the State Board of Education, District 2. And if you're thinking, oh, she's coming because she's running for office. Yes, that's exactly why I'm here. But I'll tell you that because, you know, I never as, once I retired, I guess, from the school board, I didn't come to school board meetings because I thought that that's the last thing that a board needs, is to have members from the previous board coming, giving their opinions and ideas, speaking to the press on some of the issues. So I have respectfully stayed away. But I'm coming today to let you know my school board, that I'm running for the State Board of Education, because in that role, I really feel that I can be of service to you and all the other school boards that will be in my district. So, thank you for this opportunity.
Okay, I need a motion to approve or amend and sign the minutes for the special board meeting held September 17th.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Is there any old business?
This may be under old business. Did we ever clear up the enrollment stuff? Is it still?
I still haven't got numbers back now. The request is in there, and my understanding is that they were, they've still been cleaning up EMIS and getting it to a good comfortable number, and I don't.
It's October?
What's that, what's that mean, cleaning up EMIS? I mean, EMIS is a system that is obviously approved by the state of Ohio, that this district has been using for years upon years upon years. So, why all of a sudden do we need to clean EMIS up? You don't know?
I don't know. I give you an answer if I did.
I can respect that. Hence why we made the request to begin with.
Yes.
So it's fair to say, right now, the numbers aren't where they should be. And at what point do you, is there a point that you have to certify it to the state?
The numbers, no. I mean, they're sent over, the state's pulling them through this process, and they're just adjusting. It's gonna adjust the overall funding through the state throughout the year. So if there's something that was off at the beginning of the year, our payments, foundation payments will just be adjusted throughout the year accordingly.
So has the state received any information from us at this point, reporting?
For enrollment numbers?
Yes.
Okay, so, so I think then, since we aren't able to get what we requested, then at an
absolute minimum at our next meeting, we would like what was reported to the state. That's already been done, so.
I can give you what was pulled as of the last timeframe, yeah.
And what, are they doing, is it weekly now? Because I think that it was supposed to be on a weekly basis.
Yes. It's almost current.
Right, so there was a report made last week.
I would, you would think so at some point in the week, yeah.
And I would think that the report made, there probably, maybe it was, a notation there that, here's our report, however, we're cleaning up EMIS, so this isn't a, probably not. So, my guess is, for the last number of weeks, there have been reports made to the state. So I think, if, we may have to refine our request a little bit. So rather than some ambiguous report, we would like the report made to the state.
Okay.
Because that exists. And I think that's what's frustrating for us, is we know there's reports made, we don't get them, but then when we're told that there's not a port available because.
I just, I think the biggest thing is, I didn't want to bring, when we know it's inaccurate, when we're trying to get it updated, I didn't want to bring something and report it out as.
Why would we be giving the state reports that we know are inaccurate? I mean, it's the same thing, it's like, I don't think we give them a report that we know is inaccurate, correct?
Well, they, it's not even, they're coming into the system and pulling it. So as whatever's in there at that point, they're pulling it.
Right, so then, so the current information, though it may change.
Yes.
The current information, the current information. So I think that's my issue.
And I can, and I can do it, I can bring it, and I can just say, as of this date, with the idea that, yeah, it's probably gonna change.
And that's fine.
But I can do it as of that date, that's fine.
I mean, it's not hard, right? This is a data system that.
Yeah.
You click on generate report, and it generates a report and gives you the data that the school district has. So, again, you know, this is a system that we've been running for years upon years upon years upon years. It's the only attendance system we've ever had, as far as I'm aware. And the same person that is running EMIS has been running it for years upon years upon years. And that individual actually was training other school districts on the same system years ago. So, I'm, I just, I just am real confused at how all of a sudden now, that this system is flawed, and it's wrong, and we need to clean it up. All, out of nowhere, now all of a sudden, we have a poor system that isn't giving us accurate numbers. And again, not you, right? I, I don't want, you know, to make sure I understand what your role is, and unfortunately, you're in the middle of all this, but the problem I have is that simple. You make a request, generate the report, and send it to us as we requested, and I, I just don't understand what's going on.
I mean, I'm sure there's, there is a point, at, at some point, and I, I actually understand what I, what I think is going on, okay? Like, if there was withdrawals and stuff that weren't taken out of it, I mean, you have to keep, you have to put them in EMIS to withdraw them, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, I mean, at, at some point, this, this should get turned, turned around.
Well, no, Bill, because it's always a moving, there's always, every week.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure that, I'm sure that.
We have students come and go.
Yeah, so this is updated, weeklys, updated is updated daily. So it's never gonna be fixed.
No, it'll just be effective as of that date, you pull it, as of that moment, you pull it, really.
Unless you're trying to manipulate it to make yourself look better.
Yeah, but we're not, we're not.
That's not the first time we've dealt with this, right?
We just need.
In this current situation.
Report.
Right.
That's fine, I will pull, get them to pull exactly as of that date and send it over to you guys.
Thank you. Glad you brought that up, Bill?
They were getting, just not giving information to us.
Yeah. Anything else, Bill?
Did we get any information about the young lady that was so concerned about her child that was not getting any type of curriculum because other students were being so disruptive that he couldn't learn? And so, they were taking their, her child out, and the rest of the children out, and letting that one child tear up the room. And then afterwards, they were being put back into the classroom, but nothing was done.
As far as I know, I heard of, the situation occurred again, a couple more times, in that same building, with the same child, and the administrators refused to do anything about it. That was the last that I heard after she had come to us, and it just continues to happen because they refused to handle it appropriately, I guess, but, you know, and I'm glad you brought that up, and it's, so the answer is, that's, we don't know if they've resolved it, all I know is what I've heard in the situation.
So when it comes time for testing, are they going to be excluded then?
No.
From our testing?
No, absolutely not, they cannot exclude.
If they're not going to be excluded, and they haven't had the chance of learning the curriculum, then.
Well, I'll give you, I'll give you one better. There is, in this building, a science classroom that has not had a science teacher in it since the beginning of the school year. And it's a science course that these kids need to graduate. And I just got that from a parent and a student the other day, and the kid was really disappointed, he seemed like an excellent kid, and he's just like, man. I said, well, what do you do in the classroom? He's like, nothing, it's like another study hall. We get different substitutes that come in, and we just sit there and do nothing. I said, this is your science class. He's like, yes, it's my science class that I need to graduate. I said, well, how can they give you a grade, or even expect you to be evaluated on anything that's occurring in that class? I mean, that's just not acceptable.
That's on the ACT. So if he can't have the information, he can't pass the ACT, so he can't get in.
Do you know, what grade level is it?
I do, I believe he's either a 10th or 11th grader.
Because I know, it's kind of right in line with the subject, there was, I've talked to a few folks, and there, of course, there's a lot of questions around this new system of standard-based grading, and, and that's at the lower levels, I think, elementary, middle school. But there are a lot of high school instructors who are concerned with how that prepares students or whatever, and I'm sure there's lots of research on it and whatever. But a lot of people are asking a lot of questions because they don't understand what it means.
Nor due to teachers.
Right, teachers, both, I've got it from both.
They're the ones that gotta use it.
And it's just, there's just a lot of, it's new, it's different, but there doesn't seem to be a lot of information where people who are actually using it have strong orientation to it. We had a parent who was challenged because I guess that there's some kind of a statement, and again, please take, keep these in the notes so that these things get back to somebody to answer them. Students weren't giving higher points, it's like, no one gets over a three. And so there was some challenge because students who normally, whatever it would translate to, are fours and fives, aren't giving, getting that kind of credit. So it's almost like, you know, creating this median, I don't know. But there's enough questions being asked, and statements being made by both teachers and parents, I might even talk to any students, I don't know their perspective on it, that there's obviously some lack of clarity, or people need more information. And so they called and asked me, some of them are thinking that we might know, and we have no idea.
Remarque? Absolutely. But what I don't understand is, if you're going to change your grading system, right? I'm okay with if there's a better system out there, you, you've gone through the training, you've prepped everybody, you've got everybody on, on, on the same page, the teachers completely understand what the system is, the system's ready, up and running for day one of school, right? I might be okay with that. What I'm not okay with is, we're two months into the school year, interns came out three weeks late because we're changing a grading system while we're already in school, teachers have no idea how to do it, parents are concerned about it, students have no idea what it means, and then you have one of these administrators that directed teachers to delete all your grades in the system? What is going on? And I saw the letter, it's clearly stated, from this administration, to delete your grades, and no child should get anything other than either on track or not on track. What are we doing?
Wait a minute, I can actually read it, because I, this is one of the things that was sent to me. I'm not gonna say which administrator sent it, but I'll just read the content, if it's okay. It says, greetings team, on this, this, please email this to all principals, directors, and deans. Then greetings team, this year is speeding by, and you are leading the Lorraine Promise through your consistent modeling of the Lorraine Way. This is no small task, and we want to thank you for your constant forward motion. Intern reports are just around the corner. They are scheduled to be sent home on Wednesday, September 19th. Board policy states, a written report will be sent out to parents 12 times per year in order to provide an update on scholar's progress. While making the shift to standards-based grading, please permit your teachers to provide comments rather than grades for this intern report. Next paragraph. The intent of intern reports is to communicate to parents how the scholar is doing in each subject area. Several comments are accessible through a drop-down menu in Power Teacher, and the steps to follow are in the screenshots below. There are two comments in the drop-down menu that will allow teachers to indicate whether the scholar is on track or not on track. Please guide teachers to select the appropriate comment for the on-track versus the not-on-track for each scholar, as well as one to two additional comments that speak to the scholar's progress towards our core values. There are several comments to choose from. If grades have already been entered into Power School, please have teachers remove them from the first intern report because we are actively working with the Meta, with Meta, I guess it's some company, to adjust the grading process within Power School. The grades inside Power School are currently based on points, percentages, and may show letter grades. These methods of scoring and displaying grades are not in line with our approach to standards-based grading. So obviously, and, you know, there's a lot of questions. So, just like I got this document, lots of folks have gotten the document, and it's kind of like, a little bit of information could be very dangerous because people don't know if they're being instructed, teachers are instructed to, select this choice for students' progress. And so there's, again, lots of ambiguity, so I had folks who saw this, and then they called a teacher and asked them, and they're just not being able to get straight answers. And when, when a parent asks their teacher, their kid's teacher something, they really should be able to get some information. And they shouldn't be told to talk to a principal, or talk to, this is about my kid's grade, so I want to talk to the teacher. So that's, and again, these kind of things are creating, in an already challenging environment, more questions, more challenges, probably less trust, and, you know, why are we erasing grades?
That's just another, another example of inexperienced and unqualified.
It's just not a good, it's not a good piece. And so I have, I've received some calls from people from other districts about this. And these are part of the things that, what we do, how we do it, has significant impact. And again, we can't provide any answers, we're being asked a lot of questions. So, at some stage, either we're gonna be bought up to speed, and someone's gonna come to this meeting and inform the board collectively on how these, on answering these questions, how the process worked, or we're gonna continue to get challenges, and people can talk about false narratives or whatever they want to say. But if the narrative isn't driven from the administration to this body to have understanding, then we're stuck, and it's, and it's turning out to be a perilous place for the district because there are all kinds of rumors, there are all kinds of misunderstandings, and they're being allowed to, I mean, here we are, this, this actually came out on September 10th, I think the date is.
Now, is this gonna stay for six weeks, 12 weeks? How long is this going to?
They don't know.
I don't know. All I know is, there was a, a letter sent out on September 10th about changes in a grading system, and I think school started in August. So it seems reasonable that we would know what kind of grading system we're gonna be using before school starts.
Probably lasts as long as that restorative discipline that has been so successful.
Okay, well, why didn't all of us get that letter?
This letter wasn't sent to me by someone in the district.
We don't, we don't.
By, by, by a district official. Somebody, somebody scanned this and sent it to me.
And we're nice enough to send it to you?
Nice enough, whatever.
And not nice enough to send it to all of us?
That's always gonna be the case. You're gonna get information from people who speak to you, who know you, right?
Yes.
And I'm gonna get, that's why we always ask the administration to provide us with information. We shouldn't be getting, we shouldn't even, if I hadn't gotten this, I don't know if I would have known about it.
Yeah.
So we need to, we, we, that has to be streamlined, otherwise, we've got somebody sending you something, him something, him something, me something, him something.
Well, and the other problem is, there are a lot of teachers that are in fear of their jobs as well. They don't want to communicate with us or send something to somebody they don't trust, and a lot of the information I get is, comes from anonymous email addresses.
Yeah, they change their names. I get a lot with false names.
And that's why I didn't, I didn't read the name of the, it indicates who sent it. I mean, technically, it's a public record. It was distributed to the district. And I'm not speaking to the, I'm speaking to the ambiguity.
Yes.
The information is creating as many questions as it is providing answers. And.
Okay, now I have a question, because I don't understand the report card. So if the report card, and you're not at the level that you should be, what is said that shows that you need to get more assistance?
Talking about our, our reports? Okay, so this is about an intern report.
That, yes, but what is said on that that shows that I need to go and get more assistance from whoever?
Yeah, I, I don't know, I mean, I think, I would presume that interns went out, and the interns indicated the student's progress, and at one time, our intern would have, your student is presently receiving a C, or a B, or an A, or whatever. Those things were removed.
Yes, but there's no C and B, there's only letters. So do you understand the letters?
The numbers.
The numbers?
Yeah, and I do, I mean, the numbers, five indicating mastery, four indicating.
Above average, I believe.
Above average, three indicating proficient, two indicating something, so there, yeah, and it's, it's parallel, but again, it's, it's a question of, do people understand that? And, more importantly, to our point, or my point, I think Tony's similar, is the timing of this. To have these, this reflects either a lack of planning, poor execution, but when teachers are sent information, instruction, I should say, that says, delete the grades, that causes a whole lot of skeptical thinking.
Somebody wants to comment out there.
They, he ain't gonna.
They didn't have numbers for the first interim.
They didn't have numbers?
No, it's just.
Comments.
On track and not on track.
So again.
Only two comments you'd see.
Right. And, and what's, and thank you, because the information, that's how we're getting information. We, whereas instead of being informed or notified that there's a change in our grading system, and it's, and here's what's frustrating, is because in this piece, in the first paragraph, board's policy states written report. So if you're gonna change board policy, or modify board policy, maybe you should tell the board who sends their policy, because what we keep getting is.
He doesn't have to.
On certain things, there's a, there's a total ignoring of board policy. Okay? Then on other things, it's like, oh, it's board policy. So, you know, but that's where we just need, and again, if we're gonna answer questions, we need to have, we need to be armed with answers and understanding. So that's gonna continue to be our request. In things like this, we will, though they seem redundant, we will emphatically say, this is the reason why we need information.
Okay, now, I'm concerned about curriculum. When you have a student that's having difficulty, and he's not reading at the level he should, because that, that program has now been integrated back into the classroom, what does that student do? Now, he's back into the classroom, he's in 9th grade, 10th grade, and he's reading on the 3rd, 4th grade level. What happens to that student? Does anybody know?
They fail. I mean, if they're in the 10th grade, and they're reading at a 3rd to 4th grade level, then they're not prepared, and they will.
And it doesn't mean that, that he can't do the work, it means that he's not a visual learner, that he can't pick up that book, and he can't look at the words, but he can be an auditory learner, and that you can put the headphones on him, and he can look, listen to the same amount of work, and still get that same information, and still pass the test.
If they believe he has a learning disability, then that child needs to be tested, and if he in fact does have a learning disability, then they need to create an individual education plan for that child, and put him on the IEP, and follow that IEP to the letter of what they have agreed to with that child's parents.
Does it necessarily even have to be an IEP? Can it be just another standard way of learning?
Well, no, I think, when you, when you, typically, and I won't, I would suggest they're probably doing it the same way, when a student shows marked disability, deficiency, then they assess the student's disability, and then there are ways in which they can assess, okay, what is the best intervention to use? It's not always an IEP, but again, if you have a kid with that kind of disparity between what they know and what they, the standard says they should be at that grade level, there would be probably an IEP or some assessment, because the other challenge is, depending on their grade level, how to get them in the appropriate environment, because you can't stick them in a 3rd grade reading class. So, in the, in the IEP, there allows for lots of ways to address it, if they're an auditory learner, for example. There are accommodations that can be made. But absolutely, the educators and the administrators make the assessment. So, and oftentimes, we've had kids who the learning disability wasn't detected.
So what is the material that the teacher is given inside that classroom for the student that's now within her classroom, and she has to teach him?
It's not the what, it's the how. You know, again, having this child open up to, you know, if they in fact do have a disability, a learning disability, that child would get a lot of different resources that a normal ed kid wouldn't to try to get them on the grade level, whether it means additional time taking a test, whether it means taking a test outside of the classroom in another isolated.
Having the test read to them.
Environment, to where they can focus more without distractions around them. There are a lot of reasons why children learn or have a disability in learning.
Okay. I'm, I'm just, you know, when it comes to standard-based grading, I'm not a teacher, okay? And I'm just wondering, is this something that you taught in college? And, and I guess what I'm gonna look up is, who uses standard-based grading, and what are the advantages and disadvantages of it? I'm gonna have, I guess I'll just have to try to find that for myself, you know? I'm just wondering why, you know, what, why now, what's, how's it tie in with the plan? I mean, why are we, why are we using this?
Be willing to bet, if you look at charter schools, you'll find a lot of them use it.
Again, as, you know.
I'm just guessing.
As a best practice or evidence-based piece, whatever, we've, historically, we've oftentimes had challenges because we change. You're doing one piece, boom, we changed that one, we're doing another piece, boom, we changed that. And that's been the history of the district, that's part of, one of our challenges with how we get to be where we are, because changing curriculum frequently. But again, I will reserve my judgment of the curriculum, but the way it's being done is a challenge for, for me. It's, it, this can be, even if this was a really, really, really strong way of doing this, how it's being done compromises how effective it's gonna be. If, if, if standard-based grades can be very effective, if the teachers don't understand it, or if we're implementing it to, for interns, changes, I think that's the problem, is if this thing was good, it's being compromised before it can even get initiated, before it has a fair, because people who designed this, they're probably very well-versed educational experts. But we're taking this curriculum, and I would, I would suggest that even those who created it didn't necessarily intend for it to be implemented the way we're doing it. So if it's gonna work, whatever it is, the implementation is a significant part of it, and that's where we have control. That's where a lack of planning, or a lack of something, but sending a, a letter to teachers, telling them to erase their grades, and we're gonna be shifting in the second month of school, that's tough, that's problematic. And I don't care who, whether it was a superintendent, CEO, if we receive that information at any time about transitions within the district on that kind of a notice, we'd have a lot of questions. Fair enough.
I think if I was the person who was gonna be the valedictorian of the class coming into this year, and I was gonna get a 1, 2, or a 3.
How do colleges look at that?
Isn't it?
How do scholarships?
I think I would be, I think I would be upset. I don't think I would know where I stood.
But I think this is on the.
Elementary.
Yeah.
Is it?
Yeah.
Elementary, but still.
But I had, I had, because I was thinking the same thing.
Part of your academic history.
And then I started getting.
This is only elementary.
Only in the middle.
Elementary and middle, so it's like the, an S, an U, a satisfactory, unsatisfactory.
They're the guinea pigs right now.
And again, I thought the same thing, Bill, and then I got, I started asking more questions, and then found out, oh, it doesn't impact 203.
High school.
Except when high school teachers.
I didn't know that.
Their concern, of course, is, are kids prepared for this next shift of rigor in grades? We don't have enough information to assess the, the program itself, but we do have enough information to question how it's being implemented.
So high school grades are gonna stay the same?
I think.
You're asking questions this body can't answer.
Yeah, it's still a letter grade.
Okay, so they're going to stay the same?
So they still have grade, and things are weighted the way they should?
So in other words, then there would be a smooth transition, so by the time.
And I think some of that is, Meta is our ITC, they're the ones that manage Power School and things like that. So I think that's what, it's referencing Meta, it was a matter of, if you put the, you put the information in right now, you're gonna get a letter grade. And I think that was the thing, is, you know, whether it was, for whatever reason, Meta was being contacted to transition. to transition it over to the number grade.
Right. But anytime you are telling instructors to delete grades, you've got a problem. Either you've got a real problem, or a perception problem, or, but there's a problem.
Oh, it, yeah, it doesn't sound good to have them deleted. I think it was more so that they didn't, it wasn't going to align, because it was going to come out as a letter grade, whereas we're doing the standard-based grading, which is the one through five, so.
They were, I mean, you can spin it how you want to spin it, they weren't trying to delete grades, and that's a question we're getting thrown at us. Not the other, assuming that it was this or that or that, that's the tough piece.
I will tell you that any complaint that I have got came from an elementary teacher.
And/or parent.
I, I think, I think the frustration was, there wasn't, there wasn't enough way to comment on how the child was performing or doing, or how they could be helped, there just didn't seem to be that avenue. Okay, but I can't say it's all bad right now, because I don't know enough about it.
Good enough. Any other, we're going to get there, we're going to second hear, we'll have a second hearing of public for you. Any other old business? New business?
It's kind of new and old.
I was going to say, before we go into old, can we get an update on what happened with the chief and that last meeting that we had?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, hopefully we go to an executive session, briefly around that same thing that we were before. And then, we had a meeting with the chief, we, Bill and I were there. It was a meeting that included representatives from the district, Mr. Hardy and Jeff Hawkes were there.
George Corey.
George Corey was there, from, who was the prosecutor, from prosecutor's office, but also George was instrumental in organizing sometime back when we had a lot of violence, gang issues going on in the schools, and the whole thing that ended, helping develop the resource officers in those different pieces. Also, there was Mr. Argenti from City Council, and the future, he's on the Safety Council.
Yeah, he's Safety Committee.
Bill and myself, through the chair, were representing the board. And, of course, Chief Rubin, the SRO, Dan Reinhardt, who is the lieutenant who's over the SROs, and has been the person that developed safety plans, and very integral and all that. The mayor, and Dan Given, the Safety Service Director. So there was significant concern, obviously calling a meeting with those folks, these people involved, around the issues of security, the issues of safety, the things that when, in our board meeting, we expressed some clear challenges on. And, of course, we met with the chief, he came, met with us. That following morning, he had a meeting with Dr. Hardy. And then, we met again, and that's what created this, this meeting. So, I can update us on some of those things. Some of them have directly to do with safety and protocols, so I don't know that it's something to talk about publicly. Also, I know this is, again, the district is handling it from their lens, which is theirs to do. And I can update us on the conversations that we had. We can then, you know, come back in the public discourse, talk about what our next steps are, strategies. And, but it was a very intense meeting, it was very informative. I think it was important because there was some context provided historically, in terms of what the district has gone through, and what the community has gone through. Times where we've had escalations in violence, and then times where, you know, I think the chief indicated that two years ago, and it was the first time ever, they had zero calls. And also, the Officer Colon was there, who is the data person for the police department. And they, everything is tracked, every call that's made, that comes in from somebody about an incident in school, about a fight outside, they, that's all theirs. So, we talked about the need that if there's any place that we have to work cooperatively, it's around this piece. I mean, I think they heard loud and clear the board's emphatic response to, to issues of safety. And, so I think their response, whether, I don't know what the motivation was, but I think it was clearly non-negotiable, unavoidable. We have to work together on this. And, it was imperative that the chief call the meeting, because the chief, in his position, says, these are the folks who should be at this meeting. And then he sent the invitations out. And, and so I think that was the, that was a real leverage point, that it wasn't an option for us not to attend, or anyone not to attend. And, of course, we had already invited him to our meeting, and we were grateful that, that that meeting was, was...
Is that information you can share now with the public? Do we have to go into...
Well, you know, I'm not comfortable sharing certain things, because it's, it's, what I can share is, there's a process going on in which there are discussions around this. But we don't talk about certain things publicly with safety, because there are protocols that people listening shouldn't know.
Okay.
There are responses, like lockdown procedures and different things, that are not general public information, because that would create vulnerability in terms of, of those things, so...
Just for the record, add that one of the academic distress commission...
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Patty?
Patty O'Brien was also in attendance, actually, we sat next to each other. So this was, this, there was board, commission, administration, law enforcement, city government. Kind of a model of what we wanted to establish long before. And, I guess the optimism is there would be extending of this ideology. But I also made it clear from my discussions is, we have some major issues that we're not throwing away. But we can multitask and deal with this issue. Because again, there's, the, the chief and the mayor, and other folks shared some of the feedback they're receiving in their own ears, not from the board, not from, but from people. And there's lots of it. There was lots of discussion around the, the high volume of people disenrolling from Laurenti City Schools and enrolling in other districts. And we get reports like, I think during last week, what was it, Bill? Like 25?
Yeah, it was like 25 left, five, five came in or something. But that, that's what you're talking about, the EMIS, the EMIS thing, and how it's, it's in constant, it's in constant flux. Okay, my, my concern is, is that I think the number is going to be a lot bigger than what you're, you're expecting, because I don't know what you set, set for, you know, if you set to lose or gain. Or, I mean, I know how that's, how that's done, but, you know, I, I really believe that, that you might be surprised when the, when the true numbers start coming in, and EMIS is cleaned up. You know, and, and we don't, we spent a lot of years trying to, to promote an image that it is safe. And it was, I can say, I think it was safe here, and that we have, we have good kids. So...
So anyway, we'll share.
That being said, like I said, I'm just, I'm just waiting for the numbers to come in, and, and we'll see, see what, hopefully I'm wrong. I've been wrong before.
And then, I think, Tony, what would be appropriate, if it's okay, is we'll re-invite the chief back. Because I think he can share changes that are, that are occurring. I can say this, there have been a lot of backstepping, and people are trying to make some assessments, and some reassessments, to get this image issue, this perception, I mean, I think we've had lots of attendance issues. What was the attendance on...
Friday?
Friday? I heard something like, like over 70%.
It was low, I know that.
Was gone, was like, yeah. Which, you know, that's, that's worse than what you have, that's why, when you have a snow day. Now, we had kids who, we had school in session, and it was like, you'd be better off not having school in session when you have those kind of disparate numbers. I mean, how do you teach? Now you've got to reteach, anyway. So, those are real concerns, and, and those are real management issues. So when this discipline piece starts to, for whatever reasons, wherever it's, whether it's real or perceptive, when it starts impacting 75% attendance pieces to 25% who are in the building, that's really kind of a critical situation. So, everyone's approaching it like it's really serious and really urgent. There's going to be a walkthrough of the school on Wednesday morning. Right? Is it it? That's right. See, that's why we don't like talking about this stuff out here. See, and Yvonne's gone too, see, she's gone, and I didn't, yeah. We don't know when it's ending, but...
All right.
I think the most, the most important, I think the most important thing is, it was, oh, the right people were there to table, okay? And, and they're taking this, they're taking this seriously, okay? And I don't think it will be the last time we talk.
Yeah.
All right. Any other new business? Second hearing of the public.
Marge Walker, 2955 Lexington Avenue. When you were talking about the school and the grading and all that stuff, I had run into teachers and talked to teachers through the years, and they said to me that the administration prohibited them basically from teaching, because they had to go towards curriculum or whatever the rules were. Now, I don't know what administration would be at that time, or now, whether it was a principal level, the school board level, or now with the CEO level. Anyways, it seems like that there's so much going on, there's no teaching going on. And today, I was listening to the radio, there's a man running for governor of New York. And they discussed education, and he said, taking a lot of the other stuff out of education, and do the teaching that teachers want to teach, but because of regulations so many times, they cannot do their job.
It's been a complaint for years.
Oh, yeah, teaching to a test.
I am Barbie Washington, and I live on Riverside Drive in Lorraine. I have anxiety, so bear with me. I was trying to take some notes while you guys were speaking. According to Mr. Hardy, the curriculum that is currently being taught only aligns to the standards about 17% in our district. So, I'm definitely concerned about those with special needs with all of our children. I currently have a sophomore. I am a Titan mom, my license plate says Titan, I think great things happen here. But I am concerned with the violence, with the curriculum not being addressed, and this is Mr. Hardy's second year. I'll be honest, and say, I want whoever's in charge to succeed, because if they fail, our children fail. Having a sophomore, I don't have a lot of time, or she doesn't have a lot of time, to figure out how we're going to grade, or when we're going to get new curriculum. It's, it's scary. My daughter loves to go to school. Now, probably you don't hear that about a lot of 15-year-olds. She's never missed practice, she plays three sports. She had a concussion, wouldn't miss practice, she was going to sit and, and watch her team. She did not want to go to school Friday, I couldn't make her. She's in college classes, and in honors classes. It's a big deal when you miss a block, you know, an hour and some minutes. I did speak to the chief through email, pretty amazing, I sent him an email, and he emailed me back 45 minutes later. He did mention the meeting, he did say it was ongoing, that they agreed to meet weekly. I addressed the chief about Officer Figueroa. I have watched his interactions with the kids, and I do think he's pretty amazing. He reaches them on their level. He did mention that they were going to look into the school resource officers, that Mr. Figueroa was here temporarily, and that he is going on medical leave. I will be at the meeting tomorrow, that Mr. Hardy is hosting, which is hard, because I go to all the games, so I have to miss some of the games to go to the meeting. I, you don't see me here a lot, but I'm on Facebook, thank you, Mr. Bach, for taping these meetings, so us parents can be everywhere, sort of. I encourage you to keep our kids first, really keep our kids first, and just not use it as a punchline. Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name is Summer Harvey, 832 Highland Park Boulevard, Lorraine. I first want to apologize for my tardiness. So, I don't know if this can even be answered, but going along with the new grading system, I can't remember exactly, but there was a publication made from administration saying that, like emphatically making the point to not correlate one with F, you know, five with A. So, does anyone know how the teachers are integrating the information that they did have to follow up with like, you know, a big chunk, two months of the grading period? If they're not to correlate the original As and Bs and Cs and Ds that they did have recorded with the 1, 2, 3, 4s and 5s?
I can't, I don't know directly to that, honestly. I don't deal a whole lot with it. What I do know is that it's, yeah, it's not a direct correlation, it's not a, a five is an A, a four is a B. My understanding is that a three is kind of the, if you're at a three, you're doing what you need to do. Then there's a, you know, above, and you can...
The three says a proficient level.
Yes.
The four is an accelerated level, and the five is an advanced level. Yeah, it doesn't really say how it correlates to A, B, C, or D.
It does, I know it doesn't directly correlate to say that a three is a C, it's not. A three is basically meaning that you're on pace.
Right. Well, I think that's why I had a question, because if up until this point, they had been recording grades as ABCDs, is that correct in me thinking that? Up until the point where they got the information that they were switching, they were, they were still recording as if they, as before, ABCDs. So how are they to, like I said, translate that into the new grading system if that is to not be correlated whatsoever?
It's a real good question.
I don't know for certain. I would assume that as you put in the, like, you put in a paper, it's worth 10 points, I would have think, I would think that there's something that feeds into that grading scale, similar how like an ABC grading scale does. But again, I don't, I don't deal directly with it, so I can't speak to absolutes on that.
But it's confusing, because when you read about how standard-based grading works, and they do the comparison to traditional letter grading...
Which I did read today.
Right. It talks about concepts in understanding this piece here versus grading assignments, homework, those things here. So, again, I think the big question is, how do you, the work that we've been doing for the first eight weeks, how do we reconcile that work?
Right.
To a standard that, and whenever you use a standard, the standard exists before you start the work.
Right.
Because you have to have, this is a standard, and then you do the work, and you compare it. Well, now we have work done, absent of the standard, and we're going to try to translate it into something that we didn't know what we were doing before we started. That's why I have a big challenge with it, is when you're doing it, it's very critical. So how do you make sure you capture the value of those previous weeks? And, and I think your point is exact, how, it's ambiguous. And I don't know, because if, it's, if you look in the handbook or the, the letter, it talks about the comparison, but it doesn't say, in the, in the third box, how do you... How do you translate?
Number one.
Please, I would, if I were, I would continue to ask those questions to the teacher, to the principal. Unfortunately, we don't, we can't give you information, we can just speculate on what we think, our opinions.
Do we know why the high school is not using that grading system?
That I don't know.
Well, I think with good, high school, high school grades and how they do things is kind of comparative to how every other high school does, and how colleges accept pieces. So, if you're trying to, to use a valedictorian, or a GPA to get into college in those pieces, you've got to have, you've got to compare apples with apples. you gotta have, you gotta compare apples with apples.
Well, I think that's why I'm asking because what, what's the benefit of having K through 8 on a totally different grading system than the high school? And then especially, I feel like that's going to be a hard transition from 8 to 9 when they have different standards because, like I said, it was emphatically made the point that we are not to correlate, you know, A with 5. So, from 8, grade 8, to grade 9, how in the world are they, you know, are they gonna be like, "Oh, actually, I'm a C average," and not a, you know, so that's kind of scary.
Just remove the grades and start all over.
And again, I would encourage you to keep asking questions as direct as you are and expect someone to respond to them because, as a parent, you need to understand and know.
Absolutely. I've been very fortunate that my oldest, Jersey Fisk, is an amazing student. She's an honor student, CCP student, always has been. My middle daughter, who's in third grade, she's also a very good student up until this point, but in elementary, there are ups and downs, there's dips in grades, and when there were dips, I was able to catch it and, you know, intervene. And I'm just afraid, like, am I gonna know when to intervene? Am I, is it gonna be, you know what I mean? So, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I think this, I think this comes back to what we were talking about when I asked who the curriculum director was. And I still don't know.
Well, curriculum is, is designed by Lakimber, Lakimber Brown. So, I mean, she's gonna be ultimately the one that, you know, she's the one accountable for it. I don't know, I don't, I'm not involved in that, honestly, to speak otherwise. I don't know. But Lakimber, as the chief of schools, is the one that ultimately deals with the curriculum.
So, she's the one that'll be changing that 17%?
Good point, Bill.
I just wonder how they, I'm sorry. I withdraw the question.
You don't need to, it's on record. You got your point.
Madam Kavanaugh. 17%.
Crazy. Any others? You still need to go in? Second session?
Yeah.
I just didn't know if you threw everything out.
There's some things, there's some things that we would like to share that we-
That one was just, that wasn't a big thing that was-
No, don't try to downplay it now.
That was just, yeah.
Yeah, don't, don't do that.
I have something to still say about safety. I'm still stuck on that. I'm writing a note to all the Baptist churches and the Protestant churches that I know that are, no insult intended, that predominantly are Afro-American, and here's the letter that I'm writing. In our churches, we have a notice that we put out that has all our information in and all our notices that tell us when all the good things that are happening in our church from Sunday to Sunday. And so, this is what I was gonna have put in, and I wanted it put in for like a month or more, and this is what I want it said, "That many concerned residents, many, many concerned residents of Lorraine City. We all know that our Lorraine scholars and are conducting some magnificent activities and developing exceptional programs in Lorraine. In addition, our Lorraine scholars have earned excellent grades and have excellent behavior. However, lately, safety has overshadowed, truly overshadowed, all of our Lorraine's good deeds. Parents, please talk to your scholars and make us proud again by continuing to be the scholars that are the role models for the remainder of the school year." And I put down a few of the churches, and I'm gonna get more, Friendship Baptist, New Bethel, The Living Word, God's Kingdom, Greater Victory, Second Baptist, New Creation, and there are several, several more that I'm gonna put down, and I'm gonna actually go around and have that given to the ministers of each church or the pastor and ask them to put this in their bulletin, have it read each Sunday, and perhaps put it in their Sunday school lesson because the narrative that we have must be changed about our behavior when it comes to our safety for our, our students. Because when you're on national TV, and I can get a call from California, and they say, "What are you doing in Lorraine?" This is not the Lorraine I know because I graduated from here. And I get calls like that from not only just Lorraine, New York, Florida, Texas, and they wanna know, "What are we doing here?" So, I thought if we started with the churches and we could spread this out, perhaps that would help because I think if we change the narrative, and the other thing that we could do, we have some students that are fabulous, that if we would have them come before the board with some of the things that are, that they're doing that are fabulous. For instance, we have a student, female, that is doing so well. She's an honor student, and she's an A student in welding. Something should be said about her. Something perhaps should be written about her. You know, those are the students. We have students that, when they graduate in the 10th grade, they will not only have their high school diploma, that they will also have a diploma from Lorraine Community College. There are several that, that that would happen. So, if we would change that narrative, perhaps some of the parents that are, have a tendency to want to take their kids out of Lorraine school system, maybe they'll think twice about it because we do have some wonderful things to offer. So, if we would just change the narrative, I think that would hap, that would really help Lorraine. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any requests? No requests? Our next board meeting will be held October 15th at 5 o'clock right here. I do need a motion to go into executive session, but for all those here, know that we're not coming out to do anything but adjourn after that, so there's not gonna be any other discussion following that. So, thanks for coming, but I do need a motion to go into executive session for item F, Specialized Details of Security Arrangements Where Disclosure of the Matters Discussed Might Reveal Information That Could Be Used For The Purpose Of Committing Or Avoid Prosecution For Violation Of The Law.
So moved. Support.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Democia?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
This has been a production of Lorraine City Schools TV20 WLCS.